Please, everyone. This is the July Planning Board Meeting of the Borough of Morris Plains. Would you please stand for the vote.
I will join you to defy the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hereby announce that this meeting is being held in accordance with Chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Act. Proper notice of meeting dates has been given to the Morris Newsbead and the Morris County Daily Record and posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call, please.
Mr. Organ Blake?
Present.
Mr. Garofalo Charafatli?
Present.
Mrs. Kelly?
Present.
Mr. Mrs. Decker?
Present.
Mrs. Mrs. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Bezzel?
Here.
Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mr. Drewson?
Present.
Do we have any correspondents in bills?
Yes, we have two correspondents that came in, okay, and it's pertaining to McDonald's. One came from a Warren PM and another one, and I apologize if I'm not saying your name properly, Dampantula Vessario. Okay, and it's pertaining to McDonald's, okay?
Could you do the bachelor's bill first?
Yeah, I have a purchase order number 20240916 from Phillips, Price, and Greigle. It's for Morris Plain General Planning for April 2024 in the amount of $542.50. There's no questions. I make a motion to approve the invoice.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Organ Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Garofatli?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Bezzel?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Frank Drewson?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions for the May 13th, 2024 minutes?
Yes, there is on page 324, the second paragraph. Mr. Drewson is stating he is inclined to deem the application complete and have the public hearing at the next meeting. Take out at one meeting at a time, so that's first step, okay?
Are there any other corrections or additions? We have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected. Kathy, second?
I'll second.
And who? And who?
Mrs. Kelly.
All right, you're first or second? Oh, okay. All right, and who's second? Do I have to address?
Mr. Drewson.
All in favor? Opposed? You were absent at the last meeting, so we can't. No, you can't. We can't make the motion. So we'll have someone else make the motion to approve the minutes?
I'll approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Mr. Drewson, second or more?
No, no, Mr. Bezzel's second. Okay, so we have all in favor, yes. Any anyone opposed? And Mrs. Kelly abstained. Okay. So we're going to change things up a little bit tonight. We're going to switch these applications around. So the first, oh, I'm sorry, before we do that. Yeah. Are there any comments from the public on matters that are not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will close that portion of the meeting.
We may have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I I have a question. It's it's not necessarily related.
Excuse me, though, you have to come up and.
Yeah, you'll have to come up and state your name and address.
Hi, Jessica Williams.
Right up.
Jessica Williams, 22 Stony Brook Road. I've been a resident of Morris Plain for 15 years. I'm also a board education student here just.
Can you hear Karen?
Not really.
We need to have it.
I have a big mouth. I can.
Jessica, just take that, put that on that table.
Thank you. Hi. I'm not sure if this is going to be directly related to, but as a member of the Board of Education and parent three kids in town, going over ordinance 14-2023, I do have concerns about the drive-throughs that were recently approved in town. Specifically, drive-through restaurants are permitted principal uses in the B2 and B3 zones. I know this is considered a non-residential zone. However, there is a school across the street, and I'm just trying to get some understanding of where the Board was coming from with with passing something like this, knowing that the school is across the street. And I I think we're all kind of here today to just get some feedback from you on why this would be a good idea in our little town, particularly.
Why, what would be a good idea to have?
A drive-through?
Mm-hmm, because that was something that a lot of people on the boards and governing body wanted.
They wanted drive-throughs in in Morris Plains, New Jersey. What specifically did they they want that for? Was there a specific business that they knew was coming to town?
No, 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 this was, you know, some months, year ago, so, yeah.
Well, I believe it came up in September and was actually ratified in October, but.
Jessica, this, that was a, that document was, the previous ordinance was probably 25 years old. Put together a committee to look.
Excuse me, did you just talk into it?
I put together the committee to look at updated uses and new things that would that would help fill some of the businesses in town. We started this, it was probably about a two-year process that that the planning board was involved in, the council was involved in, and of course, the committee was involved that was put together for that. Took, our professionals also were involved, our planner and our engineers, and they took uses that they thought were going to be useful moving forward. As COVID hit, everything turned into drive-ins or drive-through, dry box pharmacies, food establishments, coffee shops, major coffee outlets, businesses, rather, and that was the that was the thought behind all that back through that entire process. It could be a drive-in anything, it didn't necessarily have to be a drive-in restaurant. Could have been a drive-in coffee shop, could have been, could have been a drive-in, I don't know what pharmacy, whatever, whatever the case may be. So it wasn't for a specific use, it was just to establish a new and modern use that people were looking for after COVID.
Okay, I think we have a room full of people who may disagree with that, but I do have one specific question that, based on the specific use, drive-through restaurants are permitted principal uses in the B2 and B3 zones, does this require the Board to be satisfied that there is enough room on site for queuing of cars, or is that specifically exempt?
Well, anytime there's an application, there is a traffic expert that that looks at all the aspects of the application. I'm sure that that will be one of them on any on any application that comes to.
So that will specifically occur with this application then?
Well, we're not talking about this specific application right now because we can't, but any application that comes to the Board, our traffic engineer certainly never look at.
Okay.
Did you have a second?
No. I think that's my question. So the the correspondence that came in, can that, if that's not public record, will that be?
If you answer that question.
We'll, we'll discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, so like I think I said, we're we're going to change this tonight and and the McDonald's application will be discussed, but I I just want to let you know how the whole thing works, okay? So the application is made to the secretary at least 10 days before the next meeting. Fees are calculated. She distributes it to our professionals and to the Board. That would be our engineer. We have Bill Reiden. Our planner is Liz Lahaney, and on this particular application, we have Harold Malz, who is our traffic expert. Sometimes there's a soils expert, so there are a lot of experts depending on the type of application. So our experts review the the documents that were submitted, and they issue a report. These documents that, when they received them, it was rather late for them to be able to issue a report, and that's why we're not going to hear the complete, we're not going to decide on the completeness tonight. So if all the documents are in, the planner and the engineer and all the other experts on behalf of the planning board review their reports, and they make the reports public record, and they make a recommendation as to whether or not the the application is complete or not complete, okay? The Board members have an opportunity to ask the questions of the planner and any of the other experts, and then the Board will decide whether or not the application is complete. If it's not complete, the applicant will again then submit any other documents that they need to submit 10 days prior to the meeting, and this will start all over again as to completeness. So as I said, in this particular case, our our experts have not had a chance to review it and prepare reports, and that's going to be done shortly, and they're going to be forwarded to the applicant and to the Board, and they will be able to be reviewed by any of the public, okay? So the applicant, and they're going to be done fairly soon so that the applicant has an opportunity to prepare whatever documents need to be submitted prior to the next meeting, so 10 days before the next meeting. So the Board has 45 days from the date of the application, the date the application was filed, to determine whether or not it's complete, and so no app, no action will be taken on this application tonight. So the public is not going to be making statements, and the professionals will not be making statements about this application. So when the application is complete and the requested waivers are approved, the applicant will have to prepare a legal notice, which will be in the newsbead, and anyone that lives within 200 feet of this property will get a certified mail notice. They have to notify the property owners within 200 feet, they have to provide, they have to notify all the utility companies, the county planning board, and any other agencies that might be involved. Our attorney then determines if the notice is correct, and then the Board Secretary confirms that the taxes are paid and all the escrows are completed. And then the attorney presents his case, and the attorney calls the witnesses, each of whom has to be sworn in and their credentials have to be accepted by the Board. Each witness will testify as to the application, and when that witness finishes testifying, our experts and our Board will have the opportunity to ask questions, and then the public will get to ask questions of that particular witness, and only questions or comments about what that witness testified to, okay? So each member of the of the public that that wants to speak will come forward, have your name and address, and ask the question. And and so each witness that that testifies, that's how it will go, okay? You know, questions from the Board, questions from the professionals, and then questions from the public. We don't accept letters. You have to be here in person to testify. So again, you can review any of the documents. They're over at the Annex, 8:30 to 4:30. The agenda is posted on the Borough website, so you'll know whether or not it's going to be completeness or there's actually going to be a hearing. So when all is said and done, we'll ask for a motion to either approve or deny, and then a resolution of approval or denial is then prepared by our attorney. Did I forget anything?
I don't think I forgot anything, if I could say two things, two or three things.
Absolutely.
I think it's phenomenal that the public is involved in things. Normally, we don't see this many people, so this is great. It's exactly what public meetings are supposed to be about. And I just want to explain the reason why there is a formal way to do things. The Board is is tasked with looking at an application, looking at an ordinance, and saying, is this what the governing body permitted, and if they need to bend the rules a little bit, are there good reasons for it? They can only do that in the context of a hearing where there, as the Chair talked about completeness, there's a list of items and a list of information that has to be provided to the Board so they have the information to make that decision. Once that's done, as she said, then a hearing is scheduled. They can't consider anything outside of it. It's in fairness to the applicant and to the public that they only consider what's part of the hearing, so they can't have people talking about it other times or consider it or even talk about it amongst themselves. In fairness to all applicants, all that information only comes in during the hearing, and everybody said, we'll get a chance to speak, but it's not that nobody wants to hear you, and I understand you all came out tonight, but in order for the decision that gets ultimately made to be made fairly and to be upheld and to be bulletproof, no matter what it is, you have to do it the right way, which is there's no talking about it and considering things and and opinions. Everybody's got opinion. Again, I think this is fantastic that people have opinions about this, but that it comes in at the right time, so there is no complaining about the manner and the procedure which it's done. So I hope to see everybody when this actually is held for a hearing, but I'll turn it back to the Chair.
And and so, you know, I just want everyone here to understand, this is how it works, and does anybody have any question as to how the whole thing works and and what the procedures will be?
I have a question.
Okay, just come on up.
My about Stony 24th Court in Morris Plains. My question is about the timing. If we anticipate that this will be at the July, I assume there's also an August meeting?
Yeah, it it, I I don't know. It depends on the reports, what has to be resubmitted, if anything, yeah.
So my question is, is there any method by which the public can request a delay to a timing when not everybody's on vacation, and they would be missing meetings and a chance to come and and be heard? Like, for instance, I'm not going to be here in July. I have a business trip, so I'm not sure if there's any protocol that allows for something like that. There's obviously a lot of public interest in this particular.
The short answer is no. The municipal menus law, which is written by the state of New Jersey, sets the rules for how it's done, and it is for, it is for an applicant who's going to, for anything to build a house, those things, who's going to invest money in to have some cert on the way in which things are done, and there's timeframe, so once it gets deemed complete, the Board has to act within a certain amount of days, or or any applicant is automatically deemed complete. So it's not written, and there aren't those provisions. The the protection to the public is that you get notice and that you're told and you're encouraged to come out, but it is, there is not a provision for asking for a delay.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Bennett. This is Deflin. I'm actually a resident at 19 Dayton, so I have not done the math, but I guess I'm just a little confused as somebody that possibly was in the 200 feet. I know you mentioned will be made aware, but is there anything else that I should be on the lookout for or that I have like a right to to voice my concerns outside of people that don't live that close?
No, that that 200 feet is is where the notices have to be sent by certified mail.
Okay.
Okay, so if you're outside of that, you won't get a certified mail letter, but you, everybody has a right to discuss, to come in and make their voices heard and their opinions known, and it it's not like you have to be within that 200 feet. That is just who will get the notice by certified mail.
So then, when I get the notice, it's just read it, I don't do anything?
No, 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 you you're just being notified that this is happening within 200 feet of your of property that you own.
Okay. I did get the other certified mail, so if I've gotten one before about the rezoning, then that means I'm probably in the 200.
Well, actually not. I mean, pretty much everybody that was within 200 feet of any of the changes in the zone, which is probably most of Morris Plains.
Yeah.
Got a notice, okay? But this is just 200 feet specific to this property.
Okay, I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
I'm a marketing professional, so legal background is not my expertise. If I get said certified notice, I obviously have an interest because I am a mom of a three-year-old and newborn twins, so traffic on my street, like, I'm very interested in this. If I don't understand the notice, is there somebody that can explain it to me in a non-biased way to make sure I understand what the certified mail is signing? Or do I need to find that resource on my own?
No, I mean, that.
No, typically, the notice is supposed to, say something like that, it's supposed to explain, it's supposed to somewhat enlighten what they're proposing to do.
Okay.
And that they're asking permission to do it. So it's supposed to be written in that way. I don't have read or judged or anything else. Really, if I know the time and the place it's going to be heard to come and and get some clarification.
Like a form like this is where I could, okay?
Yeah.
I understand.
It depends on the date and time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Excuse me, I didn't catch your name.
Carolyn Bennett.
Bennett?
Yep.
And your address?
19 Dayton.
Thank you.
Very close to a cop property.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so everybody understands, and I'm thinking that you'll all be back when this matter is going to be heard. And and you're certainly welcome to stay for the for the next application if you want to see how how that goes and how the whole thing proceeds. We'd love to have you stay. You know, before you go, did you, did anybody on the Board? Yeah, yeah. Did anybody on the Board have any other comments that you would want to make to the public or? No? No? Okay, so we will take a break, a little two-minute break, and we'll move on. Okay, we're going to move on to the next application, so stay if you want, but. Yeah. If we can have quiet, please. Thank you. I've never used it. But I'm not afraid of it. Okay, so the next application we have is PB 2-24, Joan Miller Putry, its completeness and a public hearing, and 39 Hawthorne Avenue, Block 38, Lot 1 Minor Subdivision. And here on behalf of the estate and the applicant is Anthony Boyadus.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. So before we get started, we have the reports of our professionals, and you want to start with?
I will.
Mr. Reiden, okay?
Thank you. So I have a June 3rd, 2024 report submitted to the Board. The first, the first issue to establish here is completeness. As you recall, the last day, the applicant was deemed, the application was deemed incomplete, and the applicant resubmitted plans and other documents. So regarding Checklist A, they've asked for 11 waivers, and I'll reference it just by their numbers, if that's okay? If you like, I can detail what they are, but item 17, 31, 32, 33, 34, 36, 37, 38, 41, 42, and 43. We are all, I'm in agreement with those waiver requests, and we definitely grant. There was two other, on the Checklist A, there was two deficiencies. One had to do with the survey map not having a complete information about the curve at the intersection, and the other item was they they neglected to request a variance for side yard for the existing law. So subsequent to my report, Mr. Boyadus submitted a letter. He then officially requested that variance and also requested a, what he called a temporary waiver, I think, or?
Right.
For the information on the survey map. I have no problem with either of those requests, and and so I would recommend that they also be approved. And then regarding Checklist F, there was another 11 waivers requested, again, 9, 13, 15, 17, 19, 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, all of which we we agree with and recommend. That's all I have regarding completeness. That's your.
Okay, thank you very much. Do do any of the Board members have any questions or comments or?
The only question I have is the document I had. I'm looking at Checklist F, item 13, it says the applicant should request a waiver, so that has been done.
Item 13, Checklist F, I have waiver requested and recommend.
It's, sorry, I think you're looking at my letter, and so that was a follow-up. They did amend what they were requesting, which which variances they were requesting after the letter was issued.
Issued.
Okay, so do you want to go through your report?
It's, my report stated June 6th, 2024, and in the interest of time, I'll just say that I agree with everything that Mr. Reiden said, and I recommend that the bulletin is complete.
Okay, is there any discussion or question by the Board? Do these? Yes.
I go to zoning compliance, section four.
Of my le, of my letter, yeah.
Yeah, I, so we're looking at 15% reduction of, I I don't know what the V stands for, because you have 70, 7500, 6000.
So if you look underneath the table, there's a black V, which says V equals variance.
Yeah.
So that's what the V stands for in the table. But secondly, I think that doesn't have to do with completeness, that has to do with the review of the application, so you may want to.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, skip me, please.
Ask the questions, that's always a good thing. Okay, so there's no further questions, and we want a motion to deem the application complete and grant the waivers requested?
I'll move that.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the application has been, is is complete, and you can proceed, Mr. Boyadus, with your presentation.
Thank you.
Before, oh, I'm sorry, we have proof of mailing? Karen, do we have proof of mailing?
Yes, everything is in.
And the taxes.
Taxes paid, everything is good, escrow is good.
Okay, and you check the notice, and the notice is, notice of the hearing is approved.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Would you prefer that I stand or?
Whatever is comfortable for you.
I'm happy to stand.
People typically stand, but feel free.
Okay, well. See, what's typical?
Okay, well, see, what's typical, we can still bring coffee. So, uh, the Miller family...
Explain just sort of summary of the whole thing.
Yes, gross, gross, gross. So the Miller family have been in Mars Plains forever, maybe not forever, but a long time. Uh, Mrs. Miller, uh, passed away, Grace, and, uh, her estate, uh, is the applicant. And what they're trying to do here is there's a fifteen thousand square foot parcel at thirty-nine Hawthorne, and there's a house on one section of the lot. Uh, and their hope is that the board will look favorably upon, uh, the subdivision, essentially splitting it in half. So there are some variances that will be required because of the setback, because of the, um, a number of, of, of what I think are relatively minor issues. Um, Paul Anderson is here, uh, to go through the specifics. Um, and, uh, and there's, as far as, so ultimately, there's gonna be, if the board approves it, there's gonna be two lots. Um, lot one-on-one and lot one-on-two. Um, and, uh, the, the lot one-on-one will be the lot that has the house on it. Currently, lot one-on-two will be a vacant lot. Uh, the estate has no plans on building anything there. They're not, they didn't submit any drawings or architecturals or elevations because they don't want to build anything there. They just want to subdivide it so that at the end of the process, there's a one lot with the house on it, uh, seventy-five hundred square feet, and then there's another lot with, uh, no house on it and nothing on it, a vacant land of seventy-five hundred square feet. In sum and substance, that's the application. Um, we have retained, uh, Paul Anderson, uh, to, uh, walk us through the specifics of the application, the variances that will be requested, uh, and to answer any other questions that the board may have.
Okay, excuse me?
Uh, you can take, I, I'm happy to.
So I'm, I'm just gonna ask you, just because we have the public here, could you turn that in such a way that the public is able to, uh, to see what you're presenting to the board, and, uh...
I'm, I'm not gonna...
Well, we all have our copies here, so I, I think it's probably...
Does anybody have a speaker in front of them?
No.
No.
The show, why don't we leave this over there, and then if I have, my voice carries anywhere, it's, it's... Sure, we can do that.
Good evening, everyone.
Please state your names by your last.
Paul Lou Anderson, A and B D R, I saw him.
Do you swear or firm the testimony of this evening before this board, or be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, you help me out?
I do. I am, I've been here before the board on numerous occasions, and accepted as a professional engineer and as a professional planner. And both of those licenses are still in effect, in effect and standing. And I would ask that you continue to, uh, accept the, uh, those roles.
Everyone agree on the board that we accept him? Okay, so hold and proceed.
Good to see you, everyone. All right, so, as mentioned, it's, uh, thirty-eight Hawthorne Avenue, uh, block thirty-eight.
Thirty-nine.
Thank you. Thirty-nine Hawthorne Avenue, uh, Mars Plains, uh, block thirty-eight, lot one. It is a fifteen thousand square foot lot. It is a hundred by a hundred and fifty. It's located in the R three, uh, zone district, which reports seventy-two hundred square feet. Uh, if you look at the tax map that is on the drawings there, you can see the vast majority of the homes along Hawthorne Avenue are fifty feet wide, or either a hundred and thirty feet in depth or a hundred and fifty feet in depth, depending on which side of the street you're on. And, uh, the applicant proposed to subdivide this, creating two lots, being approximately the same size as all the other homes in the neighborhood. There's two zoning requirements, uh, in, in the ordinance that make, uh, conformance with this size lot, uh, more difficult. Your lot area is measured within the first hundred and twenty feet, so when you have a lot that's deeper than a hundred and twenty feet, that area does not count. So by your ordinance calculation, your, the lot area for this lot would be proposed at, uh, or any lot that's fifty by one-twenty, at six thousand square feet. So that would be the same for the lots across the street and down the block, as well as the ones that we're proposing here. The ordinance also requires the lots to be sixty feet at the setback line. And although the vast majority of these lots all have parallel lot lines left and right, they're fifty feet at the front, they're fifty feet at the back. So each, uh, each of the other lots in the neighborhood do not conform to that requirement either. There are some larger lots that are double lots. This appears to be, uh, a circumstance where there was, uh, initial subdivision where they created a, a large number of fifty-foot wide lots. Many people built on those lots and bought second lots, maybe for a rainy day or for an investment or something. And when the ordinance changed, uh, it's standard for the municipality to merge lots together. So whenever that ordinance was passed, where they became sixty-foot required, where you started measuring it only within the first hundred and twenty feet, everything in common ownership was merged together. So what we're really looking to do here this evening is to get approval for the subdivision back to its original configuration, which would match a large number of the homes that are already developed in the neighborhood. One other difficulty with this subject lot is we actually have frontage on Carlisle and Hawthorne, so the, the property has two front yards. So that makes, uh, future building envelopes, uh, slightly smaller. If you look at this from a planning perspective, uh, we require bulk variances from section, uh, thirteen dash five point one D, the, the table, for bulk, uh, considerations. Uh, the lot requirements are seventy-two hundred square feet, as I mentioned. Uh, this application has lot, uh, the, the first lot or the parent lot at six thousand square feet. But because of the requested dedication of a curve on the corner to, uh, for, for right-of-way dedication, the second lot has fifty-nine hundred and thirty-one square feet. Uh, also, each of those lots are, uh, they're required to be sixty feet at setback, and they're fifty feet. There's, with the subdivision, uh, we would be, the existing garage that's on lot one-on-one, uh, needs a side yard setback variance. With where we have proposed the line, uh, it is only three point eight feet, where eight feet is required, uh, for, uh, per conformance. And then there's also two existing non-contemporities with the existing lot. The existing home is seven point six feet off the left or the west, I presume, property line, where eight feet is required. And its front yard, uh, to Hawthorne is twenty-four point eight feet, where twenty-five feet is required. There's one thing before we leave this, uh, analysis. If you look at lot one, one-on-two, as we proposed that number, if you look at it on Carlisle, you can say that, that whole front yard width exceeds the sixty feet. It's a hundred and fifty feet wide. And, uh, certainly, you would be able, since it's only fifty feet in depth at that point, be able to count all of it. So technically, you could count lot one-on-two as conforming in lot area and, and lot width. I don't know if that's the right way to do it, we presented it, I presented it the other way, because I think, uh, part of the goals in the master plan is to have the character of the neighborhood continued. And, and in this case, the house is on Hawthorne or front Hawthorne. And it seems like the house across the street, you know, fronts on, everything is, it, so that's, that's the intention. I think technic, it's a technicality where it wouldn't require it. If the board chooses to grant the variance, or if you say you don't need it, I think either way is justified. If, I'll go over the justifications why I think it's justified in a moment, but I think if you don't require it, that's okay too. So it's your interpretation. So if you look at the positive criteria for this application, um, I, I would use a C-two cri, uh, C-two justification. I think, um, having the subdivision as opposed to not having subdivision is a better zoning alternative than, you know, than just having this one oversized lot, uh, with a house off-center. I, I believe the application promotes, uh, purposes of zoning A, C, and E. Purpose A is promotes a general welfare by providing for development consistent with the neighborhood. It also allows for infill development in the community without adding additional infrastructure, which the borough would need to maintain. No extension of water lines, sewer lines, roadways, and you get an additional, uh, building lot for someone to move into the community. Purpose of zoning C, it provides adequate light, air, and open space. These lots meet all the coverage requirements, and there's plenty of outdoor space for recreation, for a patio in your backyard with these size lots. They are close to the seventy-five hundred square feet. Uh, you just can't count that last, uh, last thirty. Uh, and then also, I believe it meets purposes zoning E, establishment of appropriate population densities. Uh, so filling in the gap in this development pattern with a single, with, with a lot that could be built, a, a single-family home, is the appropriate population density for this neighborhood. Uh, if you look at the local level, it'll, I believe it also meets, uh, two purposes or two goals of the local master plan. And, and they're both very similar in preserving and improve, improving to the greatest extent possible the established character and natural resources of the borough. That's, that's item four. And seven is preserving and protecting the suburban character of existing residential neighborhoods. Uh, I, I think if someone comes and builds a house here at some point, that those, both of those goals are met. Goes right in the spirit of the master plan. If we jump over to the negative criteria for this application, the newly created lots will be approximately the same size as every other lot in, in the community, in the neighborhood. So there's not much of a, a, a negative impact there. Uh, and again, if we look at the lot area, the total lot area is not just within the first hundred and twenty feet, there's plenty of land for people to enjoy, uh, use of these lots. Many of the lots, if you look at my sheet SP two, you'll see all the side yard setbacks that are illustrated for all the, the rest of the neighborhood. And you'll see that there's many homes in this neighborhood that have four- and five-foot, uh, side yards, and one, there's one, I know at least, that has that the main house two feet from the property line. So it's not unusual to have a substandard side yard in this neighborhood. And they're not egregious, but it's, it's, but they're all there. So I think that having a minor deviation for the garage, which is setback from the street, is not a significant impact. And the house on one-on-one complies with all the other building standards, coverage, and so forth, so it fits, uh, fits the neighborhood. And I don't think you could look at the negative criteria and say that there's any substantial detriment caused by this proposed application. So if you look at both the positive and negative criteria, I think this application, uh, the, the positive greatly exceeds the, uh, the negative, uh, uh, criteria, and the, the variances can be granted without any substantial detriment to the zone plan, the ordinance, or the neighborhood where it's being developed.
So, do you have any questions?
I have no, uh, no questions on the subdivision per se, is there, there's no engineering here, issues really, you know, develop the plan, I would, uh, I would, the only comments I have relate to the perfection of the subdivision maps and D and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
And there would be conditions to any approval, like, uh, so, we go through them now, or we can do it, uh, after we hear from Liz, whatever you like.
Go ahead, go through them now, and then, yeah.
So the, the, uh, the items would be, the applicant needs to contain house numbers and lot numbers from the tax disaster events and formalities. The second is, the second item, sorry, Karen, I don't, I don't know how, I think. The second item is that the subdivision Ds need to be reviewed and approved by the board attorney and the borough engineer. And the third is that a site triangle easement must be provided at the street intersection. That's all I have.
Okay. Liz, do you want to go through yours?
Sure, um, so my letter dated, um, again, June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, I outlined what were the variances required, which I think your question was answered, uh, uh,
Yes.
in terms of how lot area is, is measured in, uh, Mars Plains, that it's done within a certain distance from the front lot line. So, uh, the applicant is seeking C, both variances, and the testimony that was provided by Mr. Anderson indicates that he, um, I, I is, is arguing the C-two flexible C variance. Um, and then in that instance, with the, uh, the positive criteria, you know, the board should evaluate what Mr. Anderson asserted, which is that granting the variance presents an opportunity for sort of a better zoning alternative, that actually this, the lot as it stands now is less in keeping with the rhythm, uh, of streetscape of the neighborhood than, um, would be the case. It would be more in keeping if, if, if the subdivision were granted.
Right.
Um, and regarding the negative criteria, um, again, the, the first prong is whether damage to the character of the neighborhood is a, rises to the level of it being a substantial detriment. And actually, um, to, Mr. Anderson was arguing that actually, no, this would, would, would be a benefit, um, to sort of the streetscape, and would not intention, you know, would not substantially impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, because it would actually be creating two lots that were more in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood, uh, than is current, the situation currently. So I don't have any questions.
Okay. How about our board members, do you have any questions with Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is, uh,
Chase.
Okay, the existing, the existing house there, we're, we're going to, we're, we're contemplating, uh, granting a side yard variance, is correct?
Yes, 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 yeah, yeah.
Side yard variance for the garage, not for the house. There's an existing, aren't conforming...
I thought you said it was under eight, eight feet away.
Yeah, that's the, the existing condition is not worsened by this application, correct?
Okay. Uh, and so we're going to approve variances with the idea that it is going to face Hawthorne, not Carlisle, is that correct?
That, you could, I don't know that you have to make that determination now, unless you, i- if you want to grant the variance for the lot width and the lot area, then yes, you are saying that ultimately it'll be developed facing, uh, Hawthorne. It'll give them the option to, uh, develop facing Hawthorne, otherwise, there would be basically zero building envelope if you, uh, faced Carlisle.
Well, you're looking at this one. For the Miller's sake, it would be, uh, uh, appropriate to grant the variances now, correct?
I agree with you, I agree.
Okay, because otherwise, they're going to sell, I assume they're going to sell, maybe they aren't. And then the person's gonna have to come before his board.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I, I think it's a, one way or the other, whatever the board wants to do, whether it's decide, but I think you make a good case, you want to be uniform with enablement.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's the way I would come down on it, but that's a different thing. And I think before we, uh, one of the things that I would like to see here, uh, Mr. Paul, is that you give a, that you have to do, redo your, your plan, uh, that has a correct zoning map on there, you got some mistakes on it there. You got a couple, a couple lots that have been subdivided, and you show them as a big lot.
I think you were using something that was available on...
I, I used the tax map, it was online, and that came back as a comment. And I was looking, scrubbing, trying to find it, I asked Bill if he had, uh, more card copy he could give to me. Initially said, yes, I do, and then he looked at it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but he said that, no, the one you have on there is the latest one that I have. So, um, so I have on there the latest one that I can get, and that you're...
Well, I have a copy of the, the zoning, and it has a different copy, and it's the most current, okay?
Okay, well, I am happy to have that too.
Everybody on the board does, the council does, so I don't know.
Because there were other lots that were previously subdivided.
If we can get a copy of that, I'm sure we can incorporate, we'll give you a, a copy of it, so.
Okay. So, yeah, you'll see that those other lots are, are fifty-foot lots, and how you've been built on that one, Carlisle. Okay? So are there any questions or comments from the public on this application? So...
I have one question, although I don't, we, we're not paying the public.
Well, you are the public, but...
Hold your mic closer.
Are there any requirements for the driveway on the corner lot?
Well, uh, well, I don't know, we're not proposing a house at this time, but, uh, you're talking about how close to the intersection?
Yeah, I don't know if we have a zoning law that or ordinance to prevent them from putting it right on the corner.
I, I don't think... I I don't think we would put it right at the corner.
Well, that corner is going to have a, you know, a curb on it, it's not going to, yeah.
Which, I mean.
But that's really not part of.
Not part, it's a nice discussion, I completely understand, I'm just looking at what kind of.
Bill wants to make the comment.
Yeah, so we could come out of this.
When and if there's a development plan, that we, the town has regulations for driveway locations and widths and so forth and site distance and those kind of things. So that, they'll all be addressed at that point.
Good.
So then, whatever way the house is going to face is going to be addressed at that point too?
Yes.
Well, I thought you said you you thought it was more appropriate to have.
I I do believe that, I don't know who would ultimately develop it, what they think differently. They would have to like that out with the board here. Have you sent them back that they had to face the wrong way?
I think our request is for the house to be facing Hawthorne so that it's integrated into the current neighborhood, rather than having people drive by and saying, hey, why is that house at ninety degrees? And the building envelope, of course, is.
And if the variances are granted, then then they'll have, that'll be the likely direction where they will.
Right.
Would there then need to be a deed covenant incorporated to the deed to that lot to stipulate that any future development would, house would follow in Hawthorne?
I'm not sure that's necessary because whatever they do, they're going to have to come in here and ask permission anyway, so.
What's the point of the whole discussion?
Well, the point of the discussion is to determine what what our application is, not what somebody might do in ten years.
I agree, the 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 lot area does not, determination does not stipulate or or fix which way the house is going to. That's determined on a future application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aren't, aren't we really granting a building envelope right now, though?
Well, there is a building envelope according to, yes.
According to the subde, according to the subdivision.
Yeah, they have outlined what the building envelope will be.
So can't any builder go and get a permit and say, all right, I'm going to stay within the confines of the building envelope without coming back to us?
They could.
They could, did you look at the building envelope?
Oh, I'm aware.
Okay.
I also, I also know what's being built too, so.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I think that's all we want to do when we grant those variances, that I do not come back here. I hope.
Yeah. And are there any other questions or comments? So let's decide what we're going to do, are we going to grant the application with the variances? Are we going to ask our attorney to prepare a resolution of approval? Or are we going to approve it tonight and ask him to?
Do we want to open it back up to the public today or if I hold the process?
No, no, I can't hear you.
I only asked if we should reopen it to the public because I interrupted.
No. So what, how how would the board feel about?
Yes, we approve it with the variance.
Do we want to approve it tonight and ask the attorney to prepare a resolution of approval?
I think so.
I think so? Does everyone agree that we will approve it tonight?
I move that we we approve the application with the variances necessary. And the waiver, well, we approve the waivers already. And to have our board attorney draw up a approval resolution for the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Do you have a roll call vote please, Karen?
Okay. They're not going to give it to me. Mr. Organberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Gareth Aglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Stecker?
Yes.
Mrs. Kleski?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Bezzel?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mr. Drew Flutus?
Yes.
Okay, I just have to make sure, is it approved tonight and be memorialized at the next meeting?
Yes, it's approved tonight and it will be memorialized at the next meeting.
Um, yeah. Can we list the house now before next meeting?
You and I will talk about that, that's not appropriate, that's for the board.
Okay, sorry. Okay, well, good luck.
All right.
And. So you'll be back at our next meeting and we'll have a new resolution and, yeah, then you can be forward.
July fifteenth.
July fifteenth is the meeting, yes, but but it hasn't been approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good to see you all.
And you're going to get that, what happened?
Yeah, where, how do we get it?
Yeah, should I work this under letter to the secretary? Yeah. Okay, I'll send that one.
We can keep it, so I got.
You give your certificate?
Yeah, we're, yes.
Can just, you know.
I do, I do.
Congratulations, Mary. No, it's, the subdivision is approved.
It's approved, but it's approved tonight.
Oh, well. Congratulations.
You need to accept them, we'll talk about it at all.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so we belong, minor side plan, plan to do, is it report?
No.
Master plan review committee? Is there any new business? Old business, well, the owners, I'm not sure whether this is old or new, but in speaking with both Mr. Ryden and Ms. Lahaney.
Hey, one thing I, let me just go back here. We're probably going to do, look at open space and have a, or suggest an ordinance to have open space. That is covered. And one of those reasons, as you know, we are in the process or the town, the state, everybody in the state has to deal with the next round of affordable housing. And we want to make sure if we got everything, you know, ducks in order on the Morris Plains in this small town. And there's not really very much to build, develop a plan. And that's something we have to prove. I think it's easy to prove, but I think we should have that ordinance to cover anything that might have been categorized.
I'm sorry, but you have to keep the door open.
Sorry.
There's a lot of noise.
Categorized as, as, green acres or purchased through the county open space program, et cetera, et cetera. So we want to cover that.
Can we, can we put together an ordinance that is, that can defend itself against the state and these requirements?
No, to have open space, if you have open space, you can't fill one.
Okay.
So that's, we want to make sure that everything that we classify as open space is, is by ordinance.
It's tight, yeah.
Open space, we believe it is, but you know, you want to make sure you cross your Ts and dot your Is. Right, Liz, you have?
Yes, I think what we want to do is make sure that the master plan, there are things that we all here would say, oh, yeah, that's a park. But it may not be classified as a park in the, in the master plan or it might not be classified as a park in the tax records. And we want to make sure that everybody is consistent, you know, where that baseball field is, is actually a park. And so it's sort of, that'll put us in a better position when we are negotiating eventually with where, you know, what is a developable site for affordable housing. And we want to make sure that anything with a baseball ground is.
What people have to understand is there's been legislation passed and you have to, certain guidelines you have to make. And one of those guidelines was we have the county do, what's, what's the term? What's, what's the county doing for us?
Oh, they're, the cross-acceptance process, yeah, with the state.
Now, Liz is also looking at developable properties. And we want to look at that. We also have to look at possible things that do qualify for affordable housing right now. Because as you, as we all know, the state has come down and said you got to do affordable housing. Nothing wrong with affordable housing, the idea, what happens is you have to build, the developer comes in, sues you, and they build four market units for one affordable house. And that's why you see all these developments, you see them in every town, it's not just Morris Plains. Now, the next round's coming and there are guidelines that that have to be met. And we got to make sure we make our best case, okay, because they're going to give you a number.
So are we putting a committee together for this or are you going to address?
Mayor, put a committee together.
Yeah. So there's a backstory, I guess, is what we just heard.
No, there's no backstory, we, this, this ruling just came down, I don't know, two months ago or so. So I've put together a committee ahead of time to position the borough in the right place, where we have to be. And actually, a year from now, twenty twenty-five, July twenty twenty-five, we have done, we have put together, so.
It's a good way to defend ourselves, we only got two square miles to work with.
But you guys, you have to be prepared, right? You have to know what your obligation is going to be, you know, you have to know where where these units are going to go. You have to protect your open space. Now, I know the borough has bought the two parcels of open space recently, within the past couple of years. So those have to get added to the list and they, you know, through their check. So they, these things have to be systematically done so that we position ourselves correctly at one time. Our numbers are our obligation for affordable housing. All this stuff is taken into account when they give you your number of how many units that you're requiring built. Now, this is vacant land assessment, then they can use vacant land anywhere to assess how many units that you have, that your obligation has. It's part of the whole big long process, tedious process really. So put together, there's plenty more members, council members, members of the community that really got to be professionals. So I think there's about, I think there's nine of us, something like that. We've met now twice already and some of these things are already coming, deadlines are already coming. As a, as a grand sub, there's more information to come out.
We just want to be prepared, we want to be proactive rather than reactive.
Oh, understood, I just.
And there, you know, I think you received the, the copy of the planner?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and that outlines all of the deadlines that have to be met with regard to the next round of affordable housing. So take a look at that, there's, it's pretty intense. And so, so we're doing that. Something else that I wanted to bring up is I spoke to Bill Ryden and and Liz Lahaney. And they feel that in many, many cases, in most cases going forward, when they do their completeness review and prepare a letter for the completeness, for the completeness only, they will do a joint letter, okay, rather than.
Two separate ones.
Two separate letters and that they're each going so that it will contain both the, you know, the the planning part and the engineering part. And they will, both have to go through every single one of those things. Just wanted to let you know about that. Our next meeting is July fifteenth and we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Very good, thank you very much.